Okay, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Phil moves, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, either Livvy or Jamie, seconds. Are there any questions or additions to anything in that?
You said the consent agenda.
Right.
Yeah, but I think we have to accept the whole agenda and I think there's supposed to be an executive session on here. Is that right?
Yeah, we got a new agenda that has the executive session on.
Alright.
Alright, so I'm having trouble getting to where I need to go.
Okay.
Alright, now I need to go to the original.
So, we just need to vote on the consent.
Well, I need to know if Joanne needs to add anything or if anybody has any questions.
I do need to add one thing, I was negligent, very negligent in mentioning that HUD did send us a letter. They're conducting a remote review of the agency. They do this from time to time. They, we had a remote review of the Section 8 program not too long ago. And we came out without any findings. And now they're doing one of the public housing program, mostly, they have asked for some Section 8 things. But basically, we just scanned the items and sent them up to them and they review. Initially, Jane got a copy of the letter. Initially, I thought it was the assessment that they were going to come on site and do right before COVID blew up and then they canceled it. But when I looked closer at the list of items, I think this is not the same thing. So, those things are due to them on Monday. So, we're just about done scanning and getting everything ready to send to them. So, that's all I have.
I did get that letter for everybody's information and saw that and talked about, talked with Joanne as soon as I saw it. So, are there any other questions about this consent agenda or anything?
So, you're adding that to the consent agenda?
No, I'm just adding it to my report.
To your report or what?
For, that's in addition to her report.
Okay, add on, alright.
Does that review, Joanne, does it impact our rating at all? Or is it, is it a, how does that factor?
Okay.
It's so routine that we don't even need to pay any attention to it? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying don't pay any, I mean, there's nothing the board needs to do. There's really nothing we need to do except to get the information to them. And they will notify us if they have any questions or if there's any deficiencies or whatever. It was an outstanding job.
So, we'll get a result after you get that done.
Yes.
After they report back to you, okay. Anything else for the consent agenda? Anything for Mandy, anything? Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, one more thing.
Yes, yes.
So, our front desk person left, Gabrielle. She got a different job doing something she enjoys more. And so, we did do interviews and we hired for that position actually. And she's going to start part-time on Monday. She already worked part-time in another job, but she needed to give them two weeks notice. So, the other part-time, she's going to come here, we're so excited. And then she'll go full-time starting on two weeks from today.
Okay. I saw that you had 92 applications, holy moly.
Holy moly, that was a lot of applications to go through and that was drawn indeed. And then the maintenance position, we've now had 12 applications. One canceled because he was offered another job. Another one didn't show up for the interview. And that's all we've had. Well, I think we contacted another one that didn't respond to us for an interview. And the rest of them didn't really meet the qualifications, so.
Okay. Okay, I'm seeing, I have, just want to ask a question. I'm not seeing Mandy and I'm not seeing Ida Jane.
Mandy is in the office with me because with the executive session, we're not, we're not sure about allowing a co-host.
Okay.
And Ida, I did not hear from Ida.
Okay, alright, just asking. Jamie, you had a question?
Yeah, I don't know if this is applicable to the consent agenda or if it's covered later, but you sent that email, Joanne, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Can you just let us know, like, if there's been any additional change on the tenants that the moratorium and on the evictions and what the status might be on the tenants and the approximately $19,000? And if there's any hope at all of community support that might help some of that?
I think there is going to be some community support out there. I talked with Beth over at Shepherd's Crossing and I spoke with Emily over at the emergency shelter. And I haven't talked with Salvation Army and Catholic Charities. However, Beth was very aware of what they had available. Generally, those last two canisters went more than 100 or 150. But the shelter is kind of waiting on some more funds to come. And right now, Shepherd's Crossing are the ones that have the funds. So, we're referring people to all of those entities to see if there's some assistance available for them. We're, we've sent out letters and requested they all contact us if they owe more than one month's rent. And enter into a repay agreement, encourage them to contact those entities because we do request 30% as a down payment. So, we're hoping those entities can at least help with the down payment part, if not a little bit more to reduce the amount of their monthly payments. Our goal is to get them to pay these amounts off before the end of the year because the high tenants accounts receivable balances will affect our score. And so, we want to do whatever we can to get those balances paid down, at least to a reasonable level.
Is there any word, if nationally, that affects our national amounts? Do you think there's any word that there might be some changes in our scoring based on that? I mean, if the whole country is facing that same issue?
No, there hasn't been any word on that yet. I was actually wondering the same thing the other day. I suspect there's probably some talk going on about that. I, I just, you know, we're, the only thing I can say for positive sure is that we're not going to just jump to write to eviction. We, we want to work with them. We want to, you know, give them some options for paying back what they owe. I mean, we have tenants that owe anywhere from two to four months' rent or five's counting, August. And the majority of them have paid, you know, a month or two or at least some rent. We have, you know, a couple, a handful that didn't pay anything during that moratorium. But, and, but we also need to recognize that we're dealing with low-income people and, you know, we have to kind of work with their, within their budgets too. But we absolutely want to get those, those numbers down and start working on that now that we can legally. And maybe hope that they'll make some changes to the scoring process later on in the year.
I just, it's a combination of not wanting to see our score suffer because of something that's so outside of our control again. And then also to not see a huge amount of evictions because of this issue that isn't necessarily our tenant's fault either. So, there's two issues there that it'd just be good to make sure that we're doing the best we can to keep people in their units.
Yeah, and I'm sure you all know that the governor did sign another executive order preventing evictions, but, preventing the courts from hearing evictions that are related to COVID. You know, it's only a two-week order. She did say that if Trump doesn't issue another federal moratorium, that she will extend that order. But, you know, I don't think we're anywhere close right now to filing any evictions. We've had several of the tenants contact us wanting to do a repay agreement. If they haven't had the 30% down and had, we've sent them off to see if they can get some assistance with that or even more than the down payment, you know, just to reduce the balances they have to pay back to begin with. So, we're really hoping we can, we can work with these other agencies and it'll be a win-win for everybody if we can. I was wondering if it, I couldn't remember if the original one applied to HUD housing or not. I didn't, because the president had one on that expired, I think, in June or July.
July 24.
July 24, okay.
The federal one applied to public housing and Section 8 and low-income housing tax credit and a few others that we don't actually deal with. But the governor has always dealt with just COVID-related evictions. So, there has to be a direct result of COVID for them to have not paid their rent.
Okay, any other questions or additions to the consent agenda? Hi, Ida, we see you came in.
Yes, hello everyone.
Welcome.
Glad to see you. If not, I would like to call the question.
Jamie?
Yes, sorry.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Livvy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes, but I'm staying on the minutes, I was not present for the meeting.
Jan?
Yes.
And Ida Jane?
No, because I didn't hear at all.
Well, it was the consent agenda that was sent to you.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, under all business, it says update on MHA operations COVID.
It really isn't too much to update. We're still close to the public. We're doing appoint, appointments by appointment only. We're seeing people by appointment only. It still seems to be going fairly well. We just, we're getting anxious to open because we miss seeing people coming in. But I, you know, the numbers seem to start kind of be looking a little bit better, but then the students started coming back. And I don't think we've seen the worst of that yet. There's been two outbreaks noted just since they came back. So, we're, we're sticking it out. And that's really all I have to update. We, we never did get our hand sanitizing stations, two of our hand sanitizing stations, the ones for our offices in. And so, I finally canceled that order and ordered some more that should be here in a couple of days. But once we have those, we should be pretty well set up as far as supplies go. Supplies are becoming a little bit easier to get, except for Clorox and Lethal White. Other than that, I think we should be pretty well set up for when the time comes. Our biggest concern is, you know, even when the time comes to open, I, I don't think the social distancing is going to go away and maybe even not the mask ordinance. And our front office is so tiny that the very most we could have in there at one time
What do you mean, two people not in there?
Would be two people.
What do you have?
And it would really almost take another person standing at the front door to control traffic in and out. And we really don't have a person that's there to do that. So, we've still got some logistics to figure out, but we'll figure it out when, when the time comes. But I, I don't think now is the time.
Ida, what was your question?
I don't know.
Okay. I have a question, I think it relates to this. And that in your report, you talked about perhaps going in and fixing, doing some of the non-essential maintenance, having Motley and the crew go in there.
The Motley Crew?
The Motley Crew. If you're not old enough, you don't remember. There was a group called the Motley Crew.
Yeah, I think we're all old enough to. We might not know the songs, but we've heard of the crew.
Cool. Anyway, I, I would, I would like to encourage him and the guys to do that because otherwise, it's just going to, once we do get maybe open, 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 it's going to be really hard for them to catch up. So, if they can start doing that on sort of a scheduled basis with the controls that you recommended, I would really like to hear that they're doing that.
Yeah, and they are doing some of the, the more high-priority, non-emergent work orders right now.
Okay.
They're kind of prioritizing things best they can. Being short-staffed, they're, they're stretched thin already. So, but they're, they're getting done what they can get done.
Okay, we'd just like to hear that they're, that people feel like they're being taken care of. You know, that's all part of that. Okay, any, any other questions for Joanne on update on operations?
I was just, I think we talked about that last month too, is getting them to address some of that backlog. It's what you call it in your staff report. But I also think that if, that there are some units that aren't open and this would be a good time to address some of that maintenance that needs to be done so that when, so that we can get them all rented again. That, that's a loss that we, I mean, I know right now, we've not been successful for, what, a year at least in even renting them all, getting them rented up. But that day may come with the hardships that are going to come from people not having income. So, anyway, that seems to me to be the next logical thing for us to do is put a lot of emphasis on that. Thank you.
They are working in them and they understand that it, it is a priority to get the vacancies done. Patrick actually has two for sure and potentially 10 move-ins before the end of this month. Not in, not necessarily in this building, some of them are here, but in all of our units. And they have been working very hard on vacancies. We have had some, especially recently, that have been left in very, very poor condition. And some of them even had furniture things in them that they had to move out. So, I mean, it just, it takes a lot of extra time when they have to do that. But they have been focusing on that. We kind of sat down and looked at the, you know, the age of the vacancy and regrouped and said, let's get these older ones rented and get going down the road. So, they're working on it. But I, I agree with you, Linda, I think there's going to be maybe a surge in applications and hopefully it'll be one-bedroom applications. The two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms, and four-bedrooms less are doing fairly well, especially the two-bedroom less. But.
Studios.
Studios are, we're having a hard time selling them.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we're going to have to move in or something to make it look good, I don't know. Okay, finishing that area, be on the old businesses rental assistance demonstration report, update.
Update. This is the item that Linda, I believe, requested last month, but we keep on the agenda every month. I really don't have any more of an update. I'll tell you that dug-on RFP I was working on. I had a copy, I had converted it from a PDF over to a Word so I could edit it. Thought I was all done with it, finally, and we vibe and we're back and we're looking through it one final time and I don't know what happened, but half of it didn't convert over. And so, I was missing a bunch of it. And then, lo and behold, I found a sample one out on HUD's website. So, I said, well, ahead with this long thing, I'm going to use the HUD sample one. So, I just decided to start over with the HUD one because I knew that would satisfy HUD. I didn't know it was out there. But we do have our technical assistance call tomorrow. And so, I'm really excited about that because this is a person, this is not a HUD person, this is somebody that HUD contracts with, that understands RAD really well and the ins and the outs and can kind of give us a little more insight as to, as I'm understanding it, I may know more after tomorrow, but a little more insight into impacts as far as budget goes and as far as residents go and financing options go if we decide to go that route. And it won't happen tomorrow, I think tomorrow is just kind of introductory. But as I understand it, we get 16 hours of technical assistance for free. In other words, it'll be paid by HUD. So, tomorrow's our very first call.
Okay.
Jan, are you sitting in on that?
No.
Okay, so there's no board member participating? I mean, we were really interested in participating early on in this process, but there's no interest now? Is that how I should read it?
I, I just feel like so much of it, that information is technical. It, it would be more useful to us for Joanne and Mandy to get that information and then interpret it for us in language that makes, that's for people instead of legal and technical.
Yeah, and I think Danny said that very well. It's going to be a lot of technical information that I think would probably not make a lot of sense to a lot of you or probably most of you. I'm not sure it's going to make any sense to me. But, and I think that's kind of their goal is to not only help us through those steps, but to kind of give us a little more knowledge about the programs kind of one-on-one, if I'm understanding it correctly.
And then Joanne can report back to us in, in whether, whether it's worth our pursuing or whether, you know, all that. I mean, we still, there's so many ifs associated with this RAD program as far as I'm concerned that we don't even know if we're, we want to do it or would want to do it because I just don't, it's too complicated. Of course, it's HUD, so, you know, I mean.
I think they will also help us determine if this position, once we get the comprehensive needs assessment done, I think they will also give us some tools to help us understand if this position is really an option or a good option for us.
So, have you not sat in on any RAD sessions at these many, you go to several confer, you have several conferences a year?
I did and Ida Jane did and I think she and I came away going, what? I mean.
Well, we weren't even considering it then.
I know, but.
Front and center right now, so the train's on the track and we better start trying to understand it.
I, I have gone to them, but you know, those conferences gave us general information. They weren't focused on our agency. This technical assistance will be focused on us.
I know.
It won't be just general information.
The process, okay. To be determined.
Yeah. Okay, so now I think we're to the new business, which is where we want to go into an executive session. Has anybody figured out how we're going to do this?
Well, no, there's no new business, but we need to go to executive session.
Right.
So, somebody needs to make a motion and you need to do the vote. And then I'm going to send you all into, you seven and myself, into a breakout room where we will meet and nobody else can hear us or see us. Mandy is going to leave the room. And then when you all are done with me and just want to talk amongst yourselves, you're going, I'm going to leave the breakout room, which will bring me back into the main meeting. And then when, when the, when the, whatever time you decide to come back in comes, I am going to place everybody back into the main meeting. If you need more time, then you'll have to vote on that. But that's how it's going to work.
Keisha?
How long?
Keisha, does that meet the requirements that you were looking for?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so I need a motion to go into executive session.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session for 45 minutes until 6:45.
To do what?
To discuss whatever it says, what does it say?
Matters of non-elected personnel.
Yeah, that. Somebody second it?
I second.
Jamie seconds? And so, okay, Joanne, do whatever it is you need to do.
Oh, you got to do roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Livvy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Ida Jane?
Yes.
Okay, so is this going to look any different to us?
I don't think so, you're just all going to go into, don't leave me yet. You all are going to go to a breakout room individually.
You'll have a pop-up and tells you to go into the breakout room.
Yes, okay, so. So, how do I get the rest of them in there?
Click, let's pull your air.
Oh. No, because I don't, Jamie was, I don't know, can I do this? Oh, how do, hey, Kennedy, how do I get you in there? I know, it automatically set up that way. I just named this one executive session.
If you share your screen, I can get you there.
Okay.
Sharing the screen's at the bottom.
Yeah. You got it?
Yeah, okay, so you're going to want to go into, you're going to want to go into your Zoom session where you can share your screen and do all of that stuff.
Is that it? I'm.
I thought I just did that.
No, you, we're seeing, we're seeing your desktop, there you go. Is that it now?
No, you want to go where our pictures are. So, you, you have a main Zoom screen where you should see all of us and you'll have the option of creating a gallery, putting us in a gallery or lining up the.
Just a minute. What happened? I see you all, but I can't make my screen big again.
Okay, stop sharing. Okay, stop sharing.
Um. Oh, okay. Oh, wait a minute. I see up here. I see up here. Hold on. Participants. Do I need to click on the? No. Stop sharing. Okay, I'm there.
So it's at somewhere on the bottom?
Oh, it requested. Okay, approve. Kennedy, you're so smart.
So do you see it? Where it says breakout?
I see the breakout rooms and then it comes up and it says breakout rooms not started. But Jamie.
Jamie has the option of going into a breakout room? Is that what's happening?
I think so.
All right, hold on.
So I just open a new breakout room?
Yeah, just create a whole new breakout room and put everybody in that breakout room.
Oh, do I hear a sign to do that?
Yes.
Ah. I can move her though, breakout room.
Yeah, you can move Jamie.
Okay. Now open all rooms?
Yes.
But I'm not in there.
As the host is inviting you to breakout room, breakout room two. Should I say join?
Yes. Yes, say join, but how do I get into the breakout room? Oh, yes.
Joanne, there's Phil. Where's Ida Jane?
And Linda.
Probably in the main room.
And Linda.
There's nobody still in the main room.
Oh, Linda and I, I don't see them.
I can go back to the main room.
Yeah, you can pop in and out freely.
So I just hit leave room, right?
Yeah, and then you can come back when you want.
And I'm fine, Linda and Ida. Boss?
Okay. Ida and Linda, do you guys see a um, a button that asks you to join the breakout room?
Do what?
Do you see a message that asks you to join the breakout room?
No.
Okay, um. You should. Let me see if I go in there again. It says that you haven't joined. Do you have a settings button or anything?
No. Do I have a what?
Like a settings button? You should have a message that popped up and asked you to join the breakout room.
I don't know. I don't know how to do it.
Is Camellia there?
What?
Is Camellia there?
No.
Let me see if I can get Kennedy back um, in here to instruct you, because you're on your phone, right? Are you on your phone?
No.
You're on a computer?
What?
You're on a computer?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna go back into the breakout room and see if Kennedy can come out and help you. Okay?
Yes.
105-page document Joanne sent us to kind of walk, walk us through what the best practices are for this through NARO. So that we're also able to in good conscience say that we followed best practices in our decision-making.
We still don't have Ida.
No, Kennedy, Ida says she didn't see a, an invitation into the breakout room. But when I go into the breakout room, it shows she's there, but she's not joined.
So you can take her out of the breakout room and just re-add her again, and it should pop up on her screen fairly easily.
And what does it say when it pops up on her screen?
It was one of those white boxes and it says, join the breakout room, and you just click yes.
All right, I'm leaving again. I'll be back.
Okay. I, I have to admit, I glanced at all those lengthy documents, but I did.
Ida?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go in. I'm gonna remove you from the breakout room. And then I'm gonna add you again, and when I do, there should be a white box that pops up and says, join the breakout room, and then probably a button that you'll hit that says, join.
Okay.
Okay, hold on just a minute. Um, maybe I will. Just a second, sorry. Did you get a message?
Do what?
Did you get a message now?
Did I get what?
A message, a message pop up on your screen?
It just says, the host is inviting you to join breakout room.
Yes.
Breakout room two.
So is there something that you can push yes or no, or join, or something?
There's a join. How do I do that?
Uh, just put your mouse over it and click on it.
What?
Put your mouse over it and click on it.
Which one is it?
The join.
Oh, the one on the screen?
Yeah, click on join.
What do I need to press my mouse?
Yeah, just click on it.
Not doing anything.
Are you, are you clicking the left button on the mouse, left clicking on the mouse on top of join?
Yeah.
Join breakout room?
Yeah.
Nothing's happening? Hold on just a second. They're calling me in the breakout room. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Here's Joanne.
Um, Ida says she gets the button, button, but when she clicks join, nothing happens.
Okay, we'll just call Ida on the phone. And then we'll call her on the phone for the executive sess, executive session. Because Linda has her number and that way she can still be a part of it.
Okay.
So that we're not wasting too much time trying to figure this out.
Okay.
Linda? Linda, you wanna make that call?
Yes, well, I'm gonna give you the number, because I don't know how to add her to this conversation. So her number is 785-370-9353.
Okay, let me go back and tell her.
Uh, Joanne can't call because she's gonna be exiting. So it has to be someone other than Joanne.
If I just call her on my phone, is that good enough? I'll do it.
We should be able to hear her through your audio. We should be able to hear her through Jan's audio if you put her on speaker.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so 370. What was it again?
9353.
9353.
Okay, let me go back and tell her you're calling her. Hey, Ida?
Yes.
Um, Jan's gonna call you and put you on speakerphone and the, so it comes through um, her audio. Since we can't use you in the break room.
I'll have to get my phone.
Okay.
Camellia? Camellia? I need my phone.
Where is it?
I don't know. You'll have to find out. It's in there with them.
And, okay. I'm gonna go back to them.
All right.
I'll tell Jan to let it ring a while.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry for all the trouble.
She's not answering the phone.
Yeah, Camellia's going to get it for her. So give it just a second. Um, and then I just thought of something. I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna stop recording. I think I do, probably should for the breakout room anyway. But because everything Ida says will um, be heard in the main room, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna just stop the recording.
Okay. Um, we have now resumed a regular session. Uh, I need a motion to go back into executive session till seven.
So moved.
Second.
Phil and Kennedy and call the roll, Joanne?
Um, uh, Kennedy?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Hey.
And Ida.
And Ida, I'm sorry. My screen only shows, doesn't show all of you.
Ida says yes.
Okay.
Okay, and so now we can stop recording and go in, back into executive session.
Let me stop. But she should automatically come back in here.
No, it asked me to, it asked me to click on the button to leave the room.
Oh, wait, oh.
But if we're just ending the meeting, she probably doesn't have to. I mean, are we, are we discussing anything further?
No. Do we have to have a motion to come out of the session?
No.
Okay.
But it, it expired automatically at seven o'clock.
Okay. All right.
Ida might be just a few seconds behind. Has it been 50 seconds?
There she is.
Okay.
There she is. There's Ida.
Welcome back, Ida.
All right, so we have completed our executive session. Um, we're requesting that we have a similar executive session at the next meeting and there's no action to be taken at this time.
Do you want me to just put executive session on every agenda until further notice?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And does anybody have anything else to bring before this meeting? Uh, if you're all ready to leave the meeting, wave goodbye.
I will. Do you guys wanna hear some fun information?
Yes, sure.
Since the meeting's over, I'm gonna stop recording.